Thanks.
Okay, so we are live on YouTube.
Thank you, Kristi. So, welcome to everybody to our regular meeting of council. And tonight, we're being livestreamed electronically again. So, our meeting is now open. And before we do adopt the agenda, I would like to have a moment of silence. And tonight, if I could please ask everybody to have the moment of silence for the family and friends of the young person who was deceased at an car accident in Montague Township today. So if we could please keep the family and friends in our minds. Thank you. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. I have no details to report, but I'm sure they'll be out in due course in the news. So, thank you, everyone. I now have a motion to move by Jeff Carroll and seconded by Karen Jennings that council agreed to move items. I'm putting this on to the, I just decided to bring this forward if council wishes. And that is to, that council agree to move items eight C, sorry, eight E, eight E from information item to action item for discussion. That was the issue from the municipality of Leamington regarding the long-term care homes. So I would ask council if we have consensus to move that forward from information to action items. That was moved by Jeff Carroll, seconded by Karen Jennings. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. I also have a motion moved by Karen Jennings. And well, now I'll have to get a second or a different second for this one because Dean is not with us. So moved by Karen Jennings, seconded by Claus Vandemere. That the regular meeting agenda dated November the 2nd, 2021 be approved as circulated. Now, I will go to, I think I'm going to go to you, Karen, first. And then to Jeff, I believe that there is a possibility that we may have some amended, we may have to amend the agenda. So Karen, I'll go to you first.
I would like to amend the agenda by removing items three B and C, report of the integrity commissioner, pulling them from the agenda to have an in-camera discussion at our next agenda and then having it back on the council agenda for discussion.
So it's been moved by yourself. And I'm going to, I'll get a second or first Andrew. And then before we vote, we'll go, we'll have any questions and comments. So it was because we have to get a second or first before we discuss an amended motion. So do we have a second for this?
Yeah, sure.
So it's been moved by Karen and seconded by Jeff. And I think also I should have mentioned earlier that we also do, we've got a few people in the honor with us in the meeting. But we also have our integrity commissioner, Tony Fleming with us. So welcome to you, Tony. And but first, I'm going to go to Andrew and then I think I will go to Tony for this to let us know whether this is okay or not. Andrew first.
I spoke with our integrity commissioner, Tony Fleming today. And he had answered the question that this would not qualify to be taken in camera. And if he's available now and you may wish to get him to also respond to that before you make your decision.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Tony, and welcome.
Thank you, worship, and through you. In my opinion, I'm not aware of any of the qualifying statements that would be necessary, or the reasons, I should say, rather than statements, that would be necessary under section 239 to bring the discussion into a closed session.
No, go ahead and finish, Tony, please.
Sorry. And you know, obviously, if if Council Jennings has rationale for that, I'm absolutely prepared to consider the rationale for moving into closed session and see if it qualifies under section 239.
Okay, thank you. I'll go to you, Karen, please.
So I guess my question has to do with how other municipalities have managed to do their in-cameras first. But I think it would also address the fact that you have left the the reprimanding, I believe, up to council to make the decision. So that's where the in-camera would come into play for council to have an in-camera discussion on the reprimand that would be associated to your one report.
Thank you, council. I understand that. And through you, your worship. As I was saying to Mr. Hodge this afternoon, of all the reports that I've done for integrity commissioner work, I've only ever had one session that went in closed session. And that was specifically at my request because there were facts contained in a closed-session report that I deemed should not be made public. So there were two separate reports, a closed-session report and an open-session report. In all other circumstances, I've not recommended, and I can't off the top of my head recall having a closed session for an integrity commissioner report. The question of what council will do with my recommendation, that isn't a matter that falls within one of those categories set out in section 239 of the municipal act that would allow a municipality to go into a closed session. All other municipalities that I've presented reports to have had that discussion in open session.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Do we have any other questions then? Yes, Jeffrey?
Just a real quick, thanks, Reeve. You see, you recommended that they didn't go into camera first. But does that mean that they, if they decided to not, would that, I guess, can like cause a problem somewhere or go in, going into camera at that point? Would that then be, it could be called the question of the reasonability behind it?
Through you, your worship. It certainly was my recommendation in this situation. If council can see its way clear to find one of the qualifying conditions in section 239, obviously, I'm not in a position to say council can't go into closed session. However, I'm not making the recommendation. And I am saying to council that I do not see a condition that would allow you to take advantage of the exceptions in 239. So the downside, so to speak, would be that if council decided to go into closed session, you could be subject to a closed-meeting investigation request. And if the closed-meeting investigator found that you didn't have appropriate grounds to go into closed session, then that report would be made public and council would have to determine publicly how it's going to, how it's going to put policy in place to make sure that doesn't happen in the future if, in fact, you went into closed session improperly.
Okay, thanks, Tony. Follow up there, Jeff?
Yeah, so I guess, I guess the last point, so since it's always been an open session, when the discussion of reprimands come up, it's always been an open, and this is my first time doing this. So I mean, I thank you for answering the question too. But as far as the the recommendation from each council for the reprimand, that's always discussed in open council.
Through you, worship, yes, that's, that's how it's always been done in all of the reports that I've, I've done to date.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks to all three of you then. So we do have the, we did have the motion. It was moved and seconded. That now Karen, will you please just reread exactly word for word what you're, you moved the motion and then we'll vote on it?
I asked that items three B and C, the integrity commissioner report, be pulled from the agenda to be placed on an in-camera session and then brought back to council at another meeting.
Okay, so that's been moved and seconded. Now, we're going to vote on it. And I don't, rarely have I done this, but I'd like to, I'd like to ask for a recorded vote on this. Yes, Claus?
Yes, I will request a reported vote also, Reeve.
Well, just need one, so.
Okay, sorry.
So we're going to vote on this resolution. I'm going to go around the table. So obviously, Karen, you're, you're first on this, where I'm looking on the screen. So Karen, you are obviously voting in favor of this?
Yes.
Claus?
Not in favor.
Jeff? Sorry, Jeff?
You're muted. You're muted, Jeff.
Silently, guys. Sorry about that. Nay, sorry, no.
All right, then this motion is, is declined and is defeated. So Kristi, if you can make note of that, please, that would be good. And it is, and because it is also recorded, I also will not vote in favor of this. So, so it's been defeated. And Kristi, if you can make note of that, please. Did you have a question there, Jeff?
I, not to put you on the spot, Reeve, but it was, I was just going to say, if you were, your vote too as well, because it was a recorded vote.
Yeah.
You clicked that up, so thank you. No, it's fine. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So then we have this motion that we had before that was again moved by Karen Jennings, seconded by Claus Vandemere, that I'm going to make, I'm going to change this to an amended agenda because I moved the one issue forward to action. So this motion, if it's all right with the mover and seconder, then that is that the regular meeting of council agenda dated November the 2nd, 2021 be approved as circulated. That was the amended agenda. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Now, I will also remind all of council that if you do have any disclosure of interest, you can declare it now or anytime during the meeting.
Reeve, sorry, excuse me.
Yes, Claus?
Yeah, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest on item two A.
Two A?
Send me the form, Kristi.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, yes, Jeff?
I mean, not that, once again, I'd put the, on the spot, but is or if we were going to ask this, is there the reason, the reason behind the conflict of interests? Or are we allowed to ask that?
Sure, no, we're going to ask that, Counselor Carroll. It's no problem. I provide a service for the people that are on this particular petition. They're one of my customers.
Okay.
But, okay.
Yeah, you finished, Jeff?
I, I, is it, does it, does it, I guess, once again, not from the spot, but is it, is it considered in the realm of what a conflict of interest is? And especially about what this is about?
Well, conflict of interest, from my understanding, and maybe Tony can come back on the screen, is if it has any monetary, financial plus or minus gain for, for counselors involved in the discussion or decision, that would be considered conflict of interest. And since they pay me to do work, that's a monetary thing for me.
So I
Do you want to bring Tony back on?
So I think we're very lucky to have you, Tony, here tonight. So seeing that we're, seeing that we're putting each other on the spot tonight, I think we should put you on the spot.
I appreciate, I appreciate you keeping me on my toes.
Sorry, Tony.
It's very difficult for me to give an opinion when I have, I literally have no idea what the subject matter of the report is. And I don't know, nor am I asking Counselor Vandemere to tell me the details of, of his relationship with those clients. What, what I can say to council as a whole is that the decision to declare a conflict is each of your individual responsibilities. And if Counsel Vandemere feels he has a conflict, that's good enough for me. If, if Counsel Vandemere wanted to ask me a question offline, so that we don't do this in open session, you know, is, is it in future necessary that he declare a conflict? I could certainly provide that opinion once I had more facts. But my view is always that you as individual counselors have to make a decision. Can you impartially execute your duties as a member of council? Is there an actual pecuniary or other non-pecuniary conflict of interest? And you know, those are personal decisions you folks have to make as counselors. And if Counsel Vandemere has made that decision, as I said, that's, that's good enough for me.
Great, great. Thanks, Tony. And thank you, thank you, Claus, for that. So we're going to move on. I have a motion here then. It was moved by Ian, but I'll have to get someone else. This most next motion is moved by Jeff Carroll. And seconded by Claus Vandemere, that the minutes of the regular meeting, that there are minutes of the regular meeting of council of October the 19th, 2021, and special meeting of council October the 28th, 2021 be approved as circulated. All in favor? Those minutes are carried. Thank you. Do we have any business arising from any of those minutes? Seeing none, then, we're going to move on into our agenda here. And we're very pleased to have two people here tonight to do delegation regarding the Rainbow Valley Drive delegation. And normally, just to let everyone know that delegation is for the public to present. And if after it's over, if any member of council has a question to ask, we will be able to ask that question. That, that period is for questions, not a discussion. So I'm going to now open it up to Valerie and Colleen, I believe it is, Valerie and Colleen. So welcome here to do this delegation. And I also would remind you that you have 10 minutes to do it. So welcome and thank you both for coming.
Hello. Thank you for having us. We really appreciate the opportunity to appear before you. I, I am going to be speaking on behalf of our delegation unless Valerie's going to join in at some point. But, and I'm just starting my little clock to make sure I don't talk longer than 10 minutes. So thank you for making room for us on the agenda because I'm unsure about the protocol and the procedures of your council meetings as this is my first time in attendance. But it's my understanding that you delayed a vote in order to receive us this, on this night. So thank you so much. We did send in our delegation form and the, to request an action. And the action would be that the request that the council consider an alternate use of the grant. So the Lanark County Tourism Initiative Fund, that you would use an alternate use of that rather than as it's proposed currently. So I'm sorry if I've got that wrong of how I'm, how I'm starting out. But I'll give you a little bit of background pieces of how we've come to that. So I'm fairly new. My husband and I purchased our property here on Rainbow Valley a few years back and have spent sort of time in the summer maintaining the property, waiting to build. We built our house in the last year and just moved in six months ago. So I'm quite new to the township. We moved from Kentville. We were there for a number of years. My husband has retired from the service, so new to the area, loving Montague Township so far. So that's great. So the, the current proposal that, how do we find out about that? I did attach some, some speaking points that I'll stick to so that we're in the purposes of staying in our 10 minutes. So I attached those notes as well as some screenshots of how we came to understand that this proposal for the change in that use of that property came about. And for myself, I did read that early in October. There was a little post there from the Montague Township talks. I've been following that page. And they talked about that a dock was going to be put in at some site along the Rideau Canal for kayaks and canoes. So that was, I remember being interested in that and reading that there was other things came from the Rec Committee around perhaps a mural at Rosedale Hall. And I think there was something about a video. So that was interesting. And then I carried on and a week or so later, my neighbor mentioned that, that they were going to be putting a boat launch in on Rainbow Valley. And I thought, oh, I wonder if that has anything to do with what I read on that township talk. And so by then I went back and had a look. And of course, a few, quite a few comments down later, it came to, someone posted the page two of 39 of the report was to Reeve Dobson and the members of the committee of the whole. And it was from the treasurer, Mr. Hodge, and public works manager, Mr. Rothwell. So that was really the first that we understood that that was the proposed site that where the money was earmarked for. And the recommendations in that was that council directs staff to use the $5,000 Tourism Initiative Fund available from Lanark County to perform upgrades to the Rainbow Valley Drive canoe launch. So the background behind that was that they had received this funding, that's lovely, and earmarked it for that. And the discussion was that staff investigated that canoe launch at Rainbow Valley and determined that the upgrades could be made. So upgrades could be made to improve the use of that ramp for recreational paddling. So those upgrades would include signage. And I know, I know that you guys have seen that report, so I'm not going to go through that too much farther. But that was really the first that we understood. So folks that abutted onto that property plus adjacent neighbors, that was the first that we understood that this had even sort of come forward and had moved on pretty, pretty quickly. So that we found out about this possible boat launch on this Facebook page and then page two of the report, as I say. So in the proposal, it said that there's, and that's a quote, "performing upgrades to the Rainbow Valley canoe launch," unquote. So presently, there isn't a canoe launch right there that, that any of us could see and not in existence at that site. So this, it is a significant change in the use of the land right there without like notifying neighbors or public discussion or consultation or asking anything about that or directly even advising local residents. So that, that did raise some pieces for us to actually talk and put some ideas together and think about how we could come forward. So we didn't know then about parking and traffic flow. We didn't know about safety concerns. We didn't know about environmental impact. We didn't know about all those things. And I understand that Valerie has requested sort of the background information, but I don't think that she's received it yet. So, so we're just raising points for, for your consideration and discussion. The proposed site is almost directly across the river from the existing Parks Canada location, which has already got a well-known boat launch, a launch there. And the parking is there and facilities for public use, which is great. So then that, the concern then is, is around the safety of launching canoes. And stand-up paddle boards is really getting to be the thing now, these great big long stand-up paddle boards and kayaks from that launch site in Rainbow Valley. So you're launching directly across from each other because it's quite a narrow part of the channel for sure. And, and I don't know about past use, but I know for sure, just the past few years, that I know about the river traffic was up significantly. It felt like to me this year, I actually saw the Quorth of Voyager go through into the locks a few times, just a huge boat. But I also saw boats racing to get past the Quorth of Voyager in order to get into the lock before they did. So lineups sometimes at that lock this summer. So that, that, there's some safety issues or safety concerns about public trying to launch in already. That's sort of a busy part of the channel there. And that's questionable because of some of the speeds of the boats coming into that as they round that corner. So Rainbow Valley Drive, it is a narrow cul-de-sac for sure. Every, everyone knows that part. But there's currently a no-exit sign at the beginning of the turn from Highway 43. So unfortunately, this is a terrible day to raise that that turn is, is, it does not feel like a safe turn. It's into a blind curve. So we're talking about people trying to come perhaps trailering a large canoe or kayak or stand-up paddleboard and trying to make a turn from Highway 43, that very busy, fast-moving highway, onto our road in order to come down. So the safety of that, there's not a flashing light there or any other sort of piece. You're just coming around that and folks that are trailering, anything would need some time to cross the road and turn safely. So that, that's a worry. Certainly, it's a worry. So not optimal turning down into this because of that blind curve. So then we also were thinking about how many parking spaces are we talking about? How many would be created down there? And then does that still include room for vehicles with a trailer and parking? Perhaps parking for handicap vehicles? Would this parking still enable other service vehicles to access the road safely? What, if you're using overflow cars are parked on the road? So we're worried about garbage truck is a large truck, recycling vehicle is large. The delivery trucks that Amazon is here to stay and they're down the road pretty frequently. Propane delivery trucks are huge, fire trucks, safety vehicles, lots of things. Currently, the school bus has to turn around in a neighbor's laneway in order to make that turn around safely and head back up the road. So a lot of worries around what does that look like traffic flow-wise and safety on the road there and accessibility for other service vehicles. So then the next point that we were thinking about is who is this going to attract? And how and what are the future benefits for the township in that? What other amenities do we have that to offer for those folks that are here and have come here to paddle? So who's going to maintain order around the site? I have seen pictures from the, the boat launch along Highway 43 on Boat Launch Road. And there's a very large garbage can there that's just wide open. And so we're worried about that around folks putting stuff there. And then that may be attracting rodents and other, other animals from the area. So how are we going to make, make sure that it's very well-maintained? So a lot, lot of things that have come up for us and we would just ask that you reconsider that. And you know, we were asked, I know that Mr. Rothwell was down and spoke with Gordon Foster, my neighbor, and Valerie Chiesa, and spent time with them looking at the site and over the proposal. And asked that we maybe propose solutions or to be able to work alongside. But the solution that we did come up with, because that is lovely to receive that tourism grant and to have it earmarked. It's my understanding that it has to be earmarked, but not necessarily spent in 2021, but to step back and, and consider alternatives for the use of that money. And in particular, if it's a boat launch for kayaks and that, that's great. It's paddling is great. But to improve the one that is in existence already and, and, and add some facilities there that support folks that are coming off the water. So they finish their paddle and they're coming off the water. They need to use a washroom facilities and be able to wash their hands, river water and that, before they carry on to wherever they're going. So we're suggesting even a small washroom, like a composting kind of a toilet in there and a handwashing station, maybe even a little fountain that has got some potable water there for them. But to upgrade the existing parking that is in existence there, perhaps even a safer spot to have that, a better facility there. And a sort of, I don't think it's quite wider at the river there, but it certainly leads to pretty wide water around there. So we were proposed that this would be a better use of grant funds. And we're happy to work alongside or come up with other things, but asking that you consider, you consider the things that we've raised. And that is the bell. That is 10 minutes on the nose. I'm sorry. I'm trying to make it be quiet now. So, thank you. That's, that's my 10 minutes.
Thank you very much, Colleen, for this detailed delegation. So I'm just going to open it up in case we have any questions from council. If, Jeff, you have a question?
Not really a question, but just, just to say thank you for coming in. It is nice to hear from the public and to hear the opinions and obviously, and to hear that. So I do thank you for coming in because it does help too as well. So thank you.
Okay, so seeing no further questions. Colleen, thank you again also. And this will come back to council, I'm sure. And we will have another discussion, I'm sure, and Stephen will be talking to us. So thanks a lot for that.
Thank you so very much for having us.
Okay, thanks. I do have a motion here. It was moved by Ian, but I'll get someone else to help me here, please. Moved by Karen Jennings. And, oh, sorry, sorry, Karen. This was, this, you were the seconder, so I'm going to move, I'm going to so moved by Jeff Carroll and seconded by Karen Jennings, that council received the delegation from residents on Rainbow Valley Drive regarding Lanark County Tourism Grant for information. All in favor? That's good. Thank you. And I assume that you're getting Claus back on. Thanks. So we're going to move on the to the the report of the municipal officers. First one, three A, is regarding the two-factor authentication. And this one is going to be looked after by yourself, Andrew. Who is now our acting deputy clerk administrator, so Andrew, thank you for this.
Thank you. So this report is for action this evening. It's in regards to two-factor authentication system, which is a new layer of security that we need to provide for. Accessing our files and our network to protect it from cybersecurity-wise, so. This is something that's just come about with the county, they're doing the different townships in the county. It's a partnered cost, so that the cost is broken down to be a smaller cost by sharing that than if it was just by the township itself. And. What this will do is protect us against the majority of authentication attacks and meet the requirement of our cybersecurity insurance. So by. Spending the fees that are listed here in the report to do so. It will upgrade us with that, and. Probably one of the main considerations is. Our renewal of our cybersecurity insurance that will be getting priced right now by our insurance company. Without this, it would increase by a little over twenty six hundred dollars per year, so. In the long run, it would be more costly not to have this and more of a risk than to make sure we do have it, so. Because of that, the recommendation is that. Staff will be authorized to enter into this agreement through the county of Lannar. And then this would be something that would. The county is preparing to put in place within the next week or two. From this.
Thank you, Andrew, do we have any questions? Claus?
You're on mute, Claus.
You're muted, Claus?
I'm muted downstairs, yes, okay, is that better?
Yes.
Yeah, I hit the video, but I didn't hit the mute button. Okay, so my question, Andrew, is that this will help with our insurance premiums?
Yes, so if we didn't have this. Our insurance premium will go up over twenty six hundred dollars for twenty twenty two from what it is now, which is. Close to double, not quite, about forty percent increase, so. And it also leaves us open to ransomware and cyber attacks, which would. And this would allow us to have people work from home. With those risks, because it layers the security in such a way that hackers can't get past it, and isolates it to each individual worker, and then. So it mitigates our risk at the same time.
Okay, so on top of the fee of whatever it was, three thousand something, we got to pay a monthly fee of a hundred dollar maintenance?
Yes, there will be an ongoing fee for this, it 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 does have a cost, but. The benefit versus, you know, one single ransomware event would be greatly away.
Yeah, no, no, I realize that, what do you mean by the fifty-one nineteen for each license per user? License, what is that?
So. For each of the staff that has the ability to work from home. So that, say, say there was a COVID outbreak or something in the office, and we had to work from home. Which is the thing type of things we were putting policies in place for last year. This this will allow the staff to work from home, should it be necessary, and then also access files in the meantime.
Okay.
For efficiency, things like that.
All right, thanks, Andrew.
Welcome.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Andrew, we do have a motion, it was moved by Claus van der Meer. And seconded by Jeff Carroll. That council received the following report, that's the two-factor authentication report, and that the following be approved. That staff be authorized to enter an agreement with Zycom. Technologies through the county of Lannar to gain access to two-factor authentication systems. Required by our insurance providers. And to maintain network and data security. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you, Andrew. Now we're going to move forward into. Three B and. I guess, I guess we can probably deal with, well, we'll we'll deal with three B and. Three B and three C separately, I think. So. Andrew, if you want to, if I can hand this back over to you, then this is your report?
Yes, so I've put a cover page to this report. To allow us to have, you know, a flow of township resolutions in records management. And we also have our integrity commissioner with us here tonight, which I believe it would be. For clarity, best for him to present this to council and then also have the ability to answer any questions in regards to this report.
Thanks, okay, on to you then, Tony, thanks.
Thank you, worship, I don't have your agenda in front of me, so I'm not sure which report council wants to deal with first. I have them with our file numbers on them. The matter number is the dash afterwards, so I have thirteen and fourteen, I'm not sure which is B and which is C.
So B is thirteen and C is fourteen.
Okay, thank you, so if we can deal with the the B first, which is matter thirteen, this is the easier of the two reports. In terms of recommendations. Both reports relate to allegations or complaints rather against Counselor Straight. Both complaints are related to the same council decision. And that was, I'm trying to remember the date for that, I believe it was August. No, the complaint came in in August, so this was the council decision. Dealing with two decisions of council, one, the decision to terminate early the contract of your bylaw enforcement officer. And second, to assign those duties to the current fire chief. So the reports are split up into the two staff members. The first complaint deals with the decision to reassign duties to the fire chief. The allegation in the complaint was that Counselor Straight. Had some personal animosity towards the fire chief, and therefore there was a conflict of interest. With respect to his participation in and vote on that that matter. I'm not going to go through the the details in the report, I mean, suffice it to say that I. Did have interviews with both the counselor and the fire chief. I found throughout the investigation, no basis to substantiate the allegation that. The counselor had any sort of negative feelings or feelings of animosity towards the fire chief. And on that basis, I dismissed the complaint. So there was no recommendation with respect to this complaint, because I'd found no breach of the code of conduct. So what council has in terms of obligations with respect to the report is that. Council needs to receive the report for information. And council needs to determine how it's going to make the report public. I understand that this report was placed on the public agenda, so council's decision really is to determine, is that sufficient? To make the report public, because the municipal act does require that these reports be made public. Or does council want to make the report public in some other means, and that's up to council? So subject to any questions?
Can you give us the examples of what that would be, Tony, please?
Oh, certainly, so your worship, what other municipalities have done, they've published the reports on their website. They've made the reports available at the counter if someone wanted to come in and request a hard copy. I don't know how else. Can't think off the top of my head how else municipalities have made them public, those are the three basic ways, putting it on the agenda this evening. Putting it on the website or making it available at the counter or all three, it's really council's decision.
Thank you. So, are you finished with this first report then? Okay, I do see a question from Karen Jennings.
Well, I guess it's it's not really a question, it would be more of a statement to say. It's already on the agenda, so it's already there. The agendas are on the website, so it's already there, so the only other thing would be to the counter, so I don't know if council has much of a decision to make.
Yeah, we, I guess, we would make that decision after the reports are given, I believe, is that the process?
Through you, your worship, if council satisfied that, as Counselor Jennings indicated, it's on the agenda, which is published on the website. You could simply indicate in the resolution that no further action is necessary to make the report public or something like that, just so that. There is a record that you have, you know, have considered the issue and made a decision on it.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I think, I think what, I think what we could do then is go on, and we'll hear. Your report of the the second report. And then we can come back to to what we're going to do there, so. That next one would be three C, and that's fourteen, Tony.
All right, thank you, worship, so this is a second report that comes from the the same meeting. And this is the report dealing with the decision to terminate early the bylaw enforcement officer's contract. And the allegation here is that Counselor Straight had. A history with the bylaw enforcement officer and had negative feelings again towards the bylaw enforcement officer, and therefore. Had a conflict of interest in participating in and voting on that decision. On page two of the report. I list some findings in bullet form, I'm not going to go through those, I think it suffices that there was. A history between the bylaw enforcement officer investigating certain complaints. Against Counselor Straight in his personal life related to. His farm and and certain activities on the farm. I did find that there were no charges laid by the bylaw enforcement officer, no orders issued by the bylaw enforcement officer. But certainly, both the bylaw enforcement officer and Counselor Straight confirmed that there was this history. The council was certainly aware of these investigations and participated in those investigations. So what I then did in the report is look at what the code of conduct for the municipality provides. And section sixteen and eighteen were relevant. That indicates that all council members have to perform their duties impartially. And the test is that an objective, reasonable observer would conclude that the council member can exercise their duties objectively. Without any undue influence, and then if there was a conflict of interest, the obligation of of any member is to refuse to participate. In the discussion and not to vote on the matter. And then I looked at, I think, two cases from other integrity commissioners. To look at how these sorts of non pecuniary conflicts of interest have been addressed in other circumstances. The reports and the codes of conduct in those two decisions were similar enough that I found that they were applicable here. And so what I considered based on those cases and your particular code is that the the test was. Is his personal feelings towards this particular contract employee? So related to the decision that an independent, but. A person who was, you know, well-informed of the history and the facts. Could come to the conclusion that it's more likely than not that that personal history. Would influence the council members' decision-making on this particular decision. My finding was that the history of enforcement investigations did create. A situation where, in my view, a reasonable person would be more likely than not to conclude. That that history would influence Counselor Straight. And that, in fact, he did have a conflict of interest and ought not to have participated in the debate and the vote on this matter. And so based on my conclusion that there was a breach of the code of conduct. My recommendation to council was that you issue a reprimand to the counselor. So that council members understand that this is not behavior that council wishes to see repeated in the future, whether it's Counselor Straight. Or any other member of council, so that's my high-level summary, your worship, I'm happy to take. Questions from council about the recommendation. What I do caution council members when I I present reports of this nature is that. My findings are what they are in the report. I don't engage in a debate about the findings with council, it's my decision. What I am happy to engage in with council is what I've recommended with respect to the penalty. And what what the basis for that is and so on, so I'm happy to answer those kinds of questions from members of council.
And just to be clear. Tony, just just so that everybody's clear on this. We can decide on, I think, three different areas, we 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 can decide on a reprimand. We can decide on, I guess, a docking of pay, and we can decide on. Not allowing attendance at a certain number of meetings. Is that would that would be committee meetings, I believe, is that just committed the whole and other committee meetings? And is it up to three months? Maybe you can ask, so are those the three areas that we have that we can deal with?
Through you, your worship, those are the three areas that you can deal with, I'm just. Trying to pull up. And not as quickly as I would like. Your code of conduct. Because in the code of conduct. There will be a section that will talk about. There's the code of conduct, just letting it pull up here, there'll be a section that talks about sanctions, so when you talk about. Removing the counselor as a member of a committee. That's, there's two basic. Categories, if I could call it that, of of recommendations, the first category is what the municipal act calls penalties. So a penalty under the municipal act is remuneration. Suspending remuneration for up to ninety days, so one through ninety, that's the sort of the range that council has to work with. The other type of penalty is a reprimand, which I have recommended. And then the second category is something called sanctions, and sanctions are not punitive, they're designed to correct. Council misbehavior, if I could call it that, and so what I'm looking at in your code right now. Is to see what. Your code says about sanctions, and I'm. Trying to find it here, there we go. So the following sanctions are what you have in terms of your code of conduct, so. There could be an apology. There could be reimbursement of property that's not applicable, you have in your code removal from membership of any committee or board or removal as chair. Or other sanctions that are reasonably connected to the breach, so. You are correct, your worship, that that is a sanction that is provided for in your code. That you could remove the member from a board or committee. Now, it's not committee of the whole, because that is effectively council, and you can't remove a member of council from a council meeting. But if there were other committees, committee of adjustment. Parks and Rec Committee, I don't know your committees, obviously, but that is a sanction that is. Provided for contemplated by your code of conduct. I would caution council, however. That a sanction, and this is from the case law, a sanction in order to be defensible or enforceable. Needs to have some connection to the behavior that is subject of the complaint. So for example, if a member of council was being abusive to staff at the committee of. Adjustment meeting. For whatever reason, keeps attacking the planner personally, etc., then I would have. More comfort saying to council that because there's a connection between. The committee of adjustment and the behavior that is the subject of the complaint. It makes sense to perhaps remove the member from that committee, because you're then removing the member from the. Situation that caused the problem in the first place. So in this situation, this was. So in this situation, this was uh a closed session of council and then followed by an open session of council. There was no committee where I could say to council, there is that connection between councillor straits behavior and the committee itself. So I have not recommended to council that the councillor be removed from any committees or be removed as chair of any committees. Because based on the facts, as I understand them, I'm not aware of any facts that would allow me to make that recommendation to council.
Okay, thank you. Um so any questions from council? I have Claus and then Jeff.
Okay, thanks Reeve, uh thanks for the in-depth report, Tony. Uh difficult situation we're faced with. So you're saying that it can't be removed from a council and it can't be removed from committee of the whole or any other committee. So what would be the norm outside of the sanction that would be appropriate type of penalty?
I think cause I think Tony was saying that he cannot be removed from a council meeting which includes committee of the whole. That does not include other boards and committees that he may sit on.
Correct. And through you, your worship, um councillor Vandermeer, I'm not saying that you don't have the authority to remove a councillor after an investigation like this from a committee uh or a board. You do have that authority. What I'm saying is that I've not made that recommendation because I'm not aware of any facts that that create a nexus or a connection between the behavior that's the subject of this complaint and any of your boards or committees.
Okay, my only concern is that some of the actions that councillor straight has taken upon have happened at some of the committee of the whole meetings and some like council meetings, so.
And and through your worship, again, a committee of the whole meeting is a is a meeting of council. And so you you have no authority under the act to remove a member of council from a council meeting. Uh there's a very limited exception, but it doesn't apply in this circumstance, so I'm not going to take us down that rabbit hole.
Thank you.
So so then I it's it seems to me that then it's kind of more or less left then that we're talking about either either a penalty or a a penalty and or uh reprimand.
Those are the options. In in my opinion, your your worship, those are the options available to council.
Okay, thank you. Uh Jeffrey, please.
Thank you, Reeve. So I guess just to just to circle back a little bit, uh Tony. Your recommendation on this this file and and what was later to you is basically is is a reprimand and what and what what does a reprimand, once again, due to this, what does that look like?
Certainly, and through your worship. So a a reprimand is a resolution of council that is, you know, on in the minutes, so it's a public um statement that council will formula formally uh reprimand councillor straight for his behavior. And the language is is up to council. It it really is just a public statement that council uh does not support the behavior that council is uh publicly saying to the councillor, this behavior is inappropriate, it's uh not reflective of our standards, et cetera. And as I said, you know, the the language can be up to council how you phrase that. But it would be done by way of a resolution of council, so that it's it's a public statement and it's part of your minutes.
And that, sorry.
Yes, Jeff.
Just to follow up with that, and that's really, that's what your recommendation is for this particular instance.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anything else? Uh uh Claus?
Thanks, Reeve. Uh Tony, just a follow-up then, not moving. Are we allowed to to give any kind of a penalty, says monetary uh cut?
Uh through you, your worship, uh notwithstanding that I did not recommend uh suspension of pay. That is open to council to consider and you can consider that by way of a you know, uh the motion or the resolution that's before you, you could amend that to include a suspension of pay for whatever uh period of time council feels is appropriate. The decision is councils. I I only make recommendations.
Uh so Tony, the our resolution is that we uh uh simply receive this report for information from the township integrity commissioner. So if that resolution is passed as it is right as it is, then uh the then if that's passed, then are you saying then that there can't be a reprimand and or penalty? Uh or does it come after we pass this or what? What's the process?
Uh yeah, through you, your worship, the the process is that you you accept the report for information. And then it's up to council to pass any further resolution that you want to either um adopt my recommendation as it sits or to pass a resolution uh that doesn't have to uh adopt my recommendation at all. So council has has basically three options. You could um not pass any resolution and effectively uh refuse to accept my recommendation. You could accept my recommendation as it's drafted in the report. Or you could draft a resolution that takes my recommendation and adds to it or doesn't take my recommendation but does something else.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh Karen?
I have a question for Tony in reference to I know that investigations have to occur within a certain time period. But if now due to your report, you're bringing to light some information that maybe um one wouldn't have thought of in the past, would that still allow um I'll say greater than ninety day issues to then be brought forward for discussion as well?
Uh through your worship, if I if I understand the the comment in the report dealing with by law enforcement, there were certainly uh sort of historical incidents that were well beyond the ninety day um period of time for complaints. So those um historical incidents, we'll call them don't form part of the actual complaint itself. But they were important in terms of trying to understand whether there was um personal feelings of animosity that councillor straight had for the by law enforcement officer. And that history was relevant for understanding uh whether or not there was a a personal uh issue as between the two of them. But the complaint itself was only dealing with the council decision um that happened within ninety days of receiving the complaint. So that was within the timeframe uh that's required by your code of conduct. So the complaint itself, I I had no problem um putting forward the investigation based on the complaint and the timing. But I did think it was relevant to look back into the history because the whole argument in the allegation was that there was this uh historical animosity, if I could call it that, as between the councillor and the by law enforcement officer. So it was relevant to look beyond ninety days for that purpose. I I hope that answers your question, councillor Jennings.
Yes, it sort of does. It's just that because it was outside the ninety days and it was a council decision. Um even though councillor straight was involved, it it just makes me wonder when it's those items should not have then maybe been addressed prior, saying that there was still animosity to say it just links into this one situation because there have been other conversations, that's all.
Hey, thanks, Karen. Uh so uh Tony, again, I just want to make sure that council is clear on this process because we do have this resolution in front of us that simply uh says that council received this report for information from the township integrity commissioner. So am I clear in saying that if we pass this resolution as it is, exactly as it is, then if council wishes, then they can put a second resolution on addressing what they want to do?
That's correct, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no other further questions and comments, then I will uh move this, I will uh read this motion. It was moved by Jeff Carroll and seconded by Karen Jennings that the council received the following report. That being the integrity commissioner report two six seven five two dash thirteen and that the following be approved. That council received this report for information from the township integrity commissioner. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. And now I'll open it back up to council, uh if you would like to put something on to the table here in terms of a resolution.
That only addressed item thirteen, it didn't address number fourteen.
Uh that uh would be addressing. Well, I do, again, I'll ask Tony, um.
Where do you go?
Do we, this this resolution, if we're if we're passing another resolution, can this resolution be passed uh sort of inclusive of both reports?
Uh through you, your worship, I'm I don't have the resolutions in front of me, but as I understood the agenda, it was broken out into two separate reports. So I I I can't say for sure, but it seems to me to make sense that there should be two separate resolutions um adopting each of the reports. So that each of them are are accepted for information purposes. And then if council wishes to deal with um any sort of sanction or penalty with respect to either or both, then you should identify that in your resolution so that it's clear what it's referring to.
Okay, thank, thank you then. So that one then was uh that one that we've already passed was on uh thirteen. So I have another uh motion then, uh moved by Karen Jennings and seconded by Jeff Carroll that council received the following report. The integrity commissioner report two six seven five two dash fourteen and that the following be approved. That council received this report for information and approved the recommendation provided in the report from the, so the the this, the so anyways, and approve the recommendation provided in the report from the township integrity commissioner. So uh this, if we pass this resolution, then we are accepting your recommendation uh which is a reprimand, I believe. Uh otherwise, we either pass this one or we pass a different resolution. I believe that's the process then. So uh this is up to council. Uh yes, Karen?
A recorded vote, please.
Okay, so um then uh this, so I'm gonna, so DS, before we go on, then Claus, you have a question?
Okay, yeah, I'm still not a hundred percent clear. Uh we're gonna pass this resolution on the report of uh item fourteen, correct?
Well, we're going to vote on this, we're going to vote on this, uh whether we pass it or not is is not clear yet. We're gonna vote on this. That, this is on only fourteen, that was on the the second report. And that it says again, that council received this report for information and approved the recommendation provided in the report from the township integrity commissioner. Um
Okay.
I guess, does does that mean then, Tony, my question would be that we would be rec, we would be approving this recommendation? Does council then have another opportunity, put a second resolution on for something else or not?
Uh through you, your worship, if you approve the resolution as drafted, then council would be imposing uh a reprimand as I recommended. That wouldn't preclude council from then passing a further resolution if council feels that uh an additional sanction or penalty is appropriate in the circumstances. So it it wouldn't be the end of your ability to to deal with it. But you could deal with it as an amendment or you could deal with it by passing the the resolution that's in front of you and then dealing with a second resolution. The process is is up to council.
Yeah, okay, I and I'm just trying to be clear and I'm trying to make sure that everybody understands it before we vote on any of it. So uh yes, Claus?
Okay, in regards to that, then Tony, I'm glad you explained that. So we can pass this resolution and make an amendment to it to add to an an additional penalty of some sort.
We we can, we can either, we can either, uh we can either amend this one or we can pass it as it is. Or we can amend it. And if we pass this one as it is, then we can put another resolution on the floor.
Well, I think I think an amendment would be appropriate.
Um do you want to put an amendment? Anybody can put in, bring it forward in an amendment to this?
Um So how would that, how would that work then, Tony? That's still, the sanction still stays in place?
Uh a through you, your worship, the amendment is is really up to council. You can you can do it any any number of ways, I suppose. Um the recommendation in the report is for a reprimand. So if council wanted to keep the reprimand but add something else, then I my suggestion to council would be that the amendment be very clear and say that council adopt the recommendation in the integrity commissioner report and impose the following. And the following is really up to whatever council wants to impose. That would be the amendment that would, I think, be cleanest or clearest with respect to the resolution that's in front of council right now.
Okay, so further question, if I may, Reeve? If an amendment is made, brought forward to add that to the sanction and that motion gets defeated, does that mean the sanction is defeated also?
Uh through you, your worship, um no, it would be the normal process for amending any sort of resolution, councillor Vandermeer. So if the amendment either doesn't get a second or if it gets a second or isn't carried, then that amendment isn't made, but the original resolution is then still before council. Um and then council could try to amend it again, or you could vote on the resolution as it is before you now.
Okay, understand.
And if we did, if we if we if we vote on the resolution as it is right now, then we can put a separate resolution on right after if we wish. It seems to me that it's a little bit more clear to do it that way, but that's just me.
Yeah, I just I just want to understand the whole process so I can make the right decision.
Okay, uh Karen, please?
I believe in the past, we've either, we've always dealt with the first motion and then had a second motion brought forward with amendments so that they are separately addressed versus getting with a amendment and then going backwards.
Yeah, we have amended uh motions before we voted on them. But I I it's only my opinion, I seem to think it's a little cleaner if we just vote on this one as it is. And then we put another one on, if someone wants to put another one on the table. So I'm going to then reread this again so that everybody's clear on this. This was moved by Karen Jennings and seconded by Jeff Carroll that the council received the integrity commissioner report two six seven five two dash fourteen and that the following be approved, that council received this report for information and approve uh the recommendation provided in the report from the township integrity commissioner. Before I ask for the vote, I are you still wanting this one recorded, Karen?
Yes, I am.
Okay, uh then I'm going to go around, um I'll go around the table when you're ready, Chris. Okay, so Karen, I'll go to you first.
So name?
No?
No.
Okay, uh Claus?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, and it is, yes. So this uh vote then is carried. Thank you. And I will then uh go back to council if council wants to put another resolution on the table. Uh Claus?
I'd like to make a motion.
I'm sorry, Claus, when Christie, if you don't mind, um when we're uh when we're if you can keep it, if you can write it down so that when it's done, you can read it and we'll be all clear. So back to you, Claus, thank you.
Thank you, Reeve. I'd like to make a motion, put forward then, that a sanction of two months' remuneration be deducted from councillor straight.
At what point do we have to um uh do we have to uh pass a different resolution, Tony, to do with uh where where how we're going to what our wishes are to make, to put this on onto the website or not? Do we do a separate one there after? What our wishes are to make, to put this on, onto the website or not? Do we do a separate one there after this?
Uh, yes, that would be a separate resolution, your worship.
Okay, okay, so, um. You have that, Christie?
Give me one second.
Okay.
And once it's read, another recorded vote please.
Yep.
So just, so it was a resolution, so that council impose a two-month numeration. Against councillor straight, is that what it was?
Correct.
Your worship, if I could clarify, I, I think I heard the councillor say that council suspend. Councillor Straits remuneration for a period of two months.
Yeah, sorry, the word suspend should be in there, thank you, Tony.
That's consistent with the act.
Can you say it one more time, Tony?
The, the motion, as I understood it, was to suspend councillor Straits remuneration is pay. For a period of two months.
Okay, so that council suspend councillor Straits' remuneration for a period of two months.
Okay, so that's been moved, I need a second or please. To put this on the table. Do we have a second or? Put it on the table, I will second it.
Now you do your vote.
Pardon me?
Now that it's on the table, we have to do the vote.
Yes, I know, I'm just waiting on Christie there, thanks, Karen.
Okay, you can go ahead.
And I, just as long as council knows that, uh, we vote on this now, and if we. Vote for it or against it, we vote against it, we can put another resolution on the floor if we wish. I believe that's the process, so I'll go around the table, as this is a recorded vote, I'm going to go around the table. Uh, for you, uh, first for you, Karen?
No.
Uh, Claus?
Yes.
And Jeff?
No.
And so I will be saying yes, so this is defeated. Okay, and I don't have those resolutions, so I'll have to sign those later for you, uh. Uh, Christie, okay, uh, so do we have another, anyone else wanna put another resolution on the floor? Uh, Claus?
Thanks Reeve, a question for Tony, if I may please. You would, sorry, thank you, you had indicated in your conversation, the explanation that a letter of apology. Could also be brought out, requested from the councillor.
Uh, that is one of, through your worship, that is one of the sanctions that's listed in the township's code of conduct.
Okay. May I then read, continue and put forward a motion that the councillor straight be requested to send a letter of apology? In regards to this, and I guess Christie, you can word it. Can you add any words, anything to this, Tony?
Uh, I, I think it would help the councillor to know who he's apologizing to.
To the contractor, sorry.
I, I believe it should be, if, if there is, if there is an apology, I believe it should be to the, to the, to the, to the council also.
Okay, I can add that.
Have, so that council request that councillor straight draft a letter of apology to the municipal bylaw enforcement officer and council?
Correct.
I need a second to put that on the floor, first of all, did you have, uh, before, before we discuss it, I need a second or so, and we have a second or? It's moved by Jeff Carroll, and did you have anything, and does anyone have any question or comment before we vote on this? Yes, Jeff?
Yeah, thank, I, I'm just curious of what the apology would, I guess, kind of look like, is it, is it apologizing? The council for being a part of the discussion, or, and, or having, you know, well, I guess, I guess. What, what does the apology look like, and Tony, I don't know if you can even weigh in on that, but what, what would, what was that look like? Sorry.
Uh, through you worship. Uh, it's hard for me to really draft an apology, I think the. The apology should be based on the findings of the report, and, you know, the, the breach was that. The councillor participated in the discussion and vote in circumstances where he had a conflict of interest, so that. That would form the, the essence of the apology in my view.
Good, thank you.
Okay, anything else by anyone? Yes, Karen?
And I wanna record a vote again.
Yes, yes. Okay, so I'm going around the table, um, I'm going to, I'll start with you Claus?
Yes.
Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Karen?
No.
And I will vote yes. So this is carried, thank you. So I believe that, is there anything else then?
Your worship, you, you still need to pass a resolution as to how, uh, if any other mechanism is going to be used to make it public.
So I guess I just have a question, like, you were saying earlier, that this, this has already been, uh. Uh, put in, 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 in front of the public on the agenda. Uh, so my understanding then would be that after this meeting is over, and then the agenda comes off, off, right?
I, I don't know how your process works, your worship.
Okay, maybe this question is viewed in, uh, Christie, does this agenda stay? Uh, it, it, it stays public, it's, but, does it's, does it's go on to our regular website or not, or what?
So the agenda remains public in, within our document center, and then if you go on to the website and have the, go through the calendar. It will always be present under the agenda for the day it was published. If council would like to say something about putting it elsewhere on the website, we could, I guess that would be an option.
Yeah, that, that's why I wasn't clear, like, where else would it be? If it's on the website, it's on the website. Where else would it be then? I'm not saying it should or shouldn't, I'm just asking, like, where else would it be, if it's, if it's already on the agenda, then that's where it would be, I, I believe. Uh, yes, Karen?
It's already on our website for our past ones, under our docket center now, so this should be filed in the same place to stay consistent.
Okay. Okay, so do we, we need a resolution regarding this then, I believe? And if someone wants to put this on, um. I'll open it up for a mover and a second or. That, that is to put it on the web, to, to put it on the website, Karen?
So it's to put it on the website, under our docket center, where our other integrity commissioner reports are found presently. So that we remain consistent with our record keeping.
Right, okay, do you wanna move that?
Yeah, I'll move it.
Okay, seconded by. Jeff, yes, any other comments then? So it's been moved and seconded, uh, then I will call the vote, all in favor. Did you, oh, sorry, did you want that one recorded, Karen?
No, we're only putting report somewhere.
Okay, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. Okay, I think that's everything then, uh, Christie, yes?
Do we have to do that same resolution for the previous one, for, um, report? Uh, the thirteen, we, this one is only on, we're still on four, like, we're on the fourteen report there, right on it, sorry, we're on item three C. We didn't do that for three B, so should we? Do the same resolution for three B?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I, I believe that we should, and I should have thought that, I guess, so, yes, Christie?
Or can we just say that this resolution say that council direct staff to place integrity commissioner reports. Um, thirteen and fourteen on the website and make a, can that one be one resolution?
Yeah, the problem is, we've already voted on the other one. So just to be clear then, if we can get a mover and seconder to do the, to put the other one on also, so moved by Claus and seconded by Jeff. That we, uh, do the same thing, uh, as we did with, uh, fourteen. And you can word it, and I will sign it.
Thank you.
All in favor? Okay, that's carried, thank you. So I believe that's it, and so Tony, thank you very much for helping us through this, uh, issue here.
Thank you, your worship.
Yeah, I believe that, uh, this is all we need you for, and you're welcome to stay with us, but, uh.
I think I might get something to eat, your worship, thank you anyway.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah.
Good night, Tony.
So we're moving on, uh, to, uh, the reports of the committees. And, um, the first is the, uh, committee of the whole. And I do have a motion, and I need a mover instead of Ian, uh, for this one. The second or was Jeff, so, uh, I need a mover, it was moved by Karen Jennings. Second by Jeff Carroll, that the minutes, the committee of the whole meeting of October the nineteenth, twenty twenty-one be approved as circulated. All in favor? Those are carried, any business arising from those minutes?
No, sorry, I was ready to vote.
Okay, no, we've, uh, we've, yeah, we voted for them already.
Yeah.
No business? Okay, then we're moving on. Uh, we have some bylaws, the first one was moved by Jeff Carroll and second by Karen Jennings, that bylaw thirty-eight sixty-eight. Twenty twenty-one, a bylaw to appoint a municipal auditor for the township of Montague. Be read for a second and third time and pass, signed and sealed this second day of November twenty twenty-one, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Uh, that's the only bylaw we have, so we're moving on, um, we did not have any petitions, our bylaws. We have no motions, no most notices of motion, and the correspondence, and we do have a motion. They move by Karen Jennings, and seconded by, I need a second for that. Jeff Carroll? That council receives the council assigned task item as information. All in, uh, are you voting Karen, or did you have a question?
Had a question.
Yes.
So, out of curiosity, do we have, um, an update as to when the recreation feasibility study will be coming back to council?
I guess the only work, person that might be able to answer that tonight would be Andrew, but if not. Uh, if we don't have a timeline, we can't answer it.
I'm just trying to remember in which regard, um, beyond, would you be thinking, like, with the budget discussions for twenty twenty-two?
The report that still has to come back? On the recreation feasibility study?
Okay, so I could look into that for the next meeting of council.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, um, then we're going to, uh, okay, all in favor of that? And that's carried, thank you. So now we're going to be moving, uh, the information, we're going to be discussing the information items, and, um. Um, I, I actually made a mistake, uh, here, but, uh. I'll go around and get consensus at, from, uh, council. Um, if it's still okay to do this, I did move already, and we voted on moving. Uh, action, information item E to action, but I'd like to do the same thing for G. And you will know why when I mention it, so if, do I, do we have consensus to also move G? That is the township of Adelaide Metcalf for the funding of rural infra- infrastructure projects. Um, do we have consensus to move that forward, uh, Claus?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Jeff? Okay, thank you, so the first one, um. Uh, I don't have it in front of me, but I'm sure you've all read it, and that was regarding the municipality of Leamington. And that was regarding, uh, their motion that they had passed regarding the long-term care homes. And we all know where the situation was, and I, I would like council, uh, councils. If you, I would like councils to support the resolution of the municipality of Leamington. And, uh, send it out to all applicable people. Um, so does anyone have any questions on that?
Nope.
If not, uh, then, um, if we can, uh. Uh, I guess, now I can't remember, I, I, I'm asking for support, do we move this, we, we have a, we need to move and second this? So can I have a mover and second on this end, please? It's moved by Claus and seconded by Jeff. All in favor? And.
I have a question, no?
Yes, yeah, question, yeah.
Because I'm reading about it, and I mean, it talks about the private ones, so this is just strictly funded ones, or the, are we now going to be? Moving forward with funding all long-term care, even private ones?
Yeah, I, I, I'm only talking, sorry, thanks, I'm talking about the, uh, the, not, not, I'm not talking about the private ones.
Okay.
Public long-term care homes. That's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, all in favor? And that's carried, thank you. The other one, uh, if you read it, had to do with, uh, the. Funding of the rural infrastructure projects. And the reason that I moved this forward is because I like it to be put on record. That we are supporting this resolution of a township of Adelaide Metcalf. Specifically, because it talks about major bridges and culverts. And whether we like it or not, there will be another issue coming up. In the next few years regarding our Andrewsville Bridge. And so I just wanted to make, put this on the table to, to support this motion. Because it is about making sure that we have funding for ru- for rural. Infrastructure projects, which is what this would be, so does council have any questions on this first? Uh, then I'm going to ask, uh, mover and a seconder for this, please. So moved by Jeff and seconded by Karen. Uh, all in favor? Okay, and that one's carried, I'll just give you a minute, Christie, so you can catch up there.
Yeah, I'm good on my end, Bill.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, so now I'm going to, we do not have any unfinished business or other business. So, uh, before we adjourn, I'm going to ask you, Christie, um, if we have any. Questions from the public.
Just let me take a quick look here. I have no questions from the public.
Thank you. So I have a motion moved by Jeff Carroll and second by Claus Vandermeer, that bylaw thirty-eight sixty-nine twenty twenty-one being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council. At its regular meeting held on November the second, twenty twenty-one. Be read for a second and third time and pass, signed and sealed this second day of November, twenty twenty-one, all in favor? Thank you. We also have another motion moved by Karen Jennings and second by Ian Straight, that this meeting do now adjourn.
No.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, uh. Oh, sorry, which one does that care?
The one that we were finishing there. It said Karen and Ian.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. So this last motion is moved by Karen Jennings, seconded by. Claus Vandermeer. That this meeting do now adjourn at seven thirty five. P M until the call of the reef subject to need. All in favor? And this is carried. So we're just going to take a couple of minutes to move over our uh to our next meeting of uh our next committee. Will take two or three minutes. Thanks.
Yep, I was hitting the wrong button. I wasn't getting there by video.
Yeah, I had to grab something. I tried pouring rain over there right now.
Oh, is that right? Better than snow.
Sorry?
Better than snow.
But yeah, you're not kidding.
Oh, no.
No, thanks. I don't have all these cleaned up yet.
Yeah, I know.
Are you covered from the snowy? I forgot all about them.
Yeah, I know. Next spring is not fun.
Hey, I think we're ready to go again. Everybody's here. Thank you. Um so uh we're uh, this is our, I'm going to open our committee of the whole meeting. It's also being live streamed electronically. November the second. Um so our meeting is now open. Uh we have a motion. I need a mover, please. Uh um, oh, I'm sorry. So Ian, you are Ian, are you you are back now? Thank you. So this motion was moved by Ian Straight, second by Claus Vandermeer. That the committee of the whole agenda dated November the second twenty twenty one be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. I'll also remind all of council that if you have any disclosure interest, you can declare it now or anytime during the meeting. And we're going straight into our first report of our municipal officer. And this one is going to be. Uh by Stephen uh Rothwell on the Andrewsville Main Street Rito Lakes ATV request. So thank you, Steve, and welcome.
Thank you, Reeve. I, yeah, so this report brought forward to committee um is a request from um the Rito Lakes ATV club. Uh they requested per- permission from Montague Township to use Andrewsville Bridge, which would require them to use Andrewville Main Street. Um this request is brought forward as uh they had a bit of resistance from merit flow using the downtown corridor for their ATV route. In doing this, it allows them to access the neighboring uh club. And it is only, it would be amending our existing bylaw and it would just be adding the main street as the other. Um road they are using as a county road, which they have obtained permission to use, and they've obtained permission from Parks Canada for everything else along there as well. Um so just looking for. Council approval to amend and uh. And for uh to move forward to council. And that is your report.
So just I just have one question before we open up here, Steve. Um w- this has gone to the county, right?
That is correct. It is my understanding they they have an open uh kind of bylaw on this for their roads to add to it. Um. So it has been approved by Public Works at the county level to uh add this Richardson section.
Yeah, and I asked that question because because the bridge. Uh belongs to the two counties. So um do you know if it has also been cleared with the lea- the United Counties of Leeds Granville?
That's correct. It's uh on part with the neighboring um.
Okay.
ATV club. They've have that permission as well with the bylaw with that county as well.
And and do they know that that bridge is closed during the winter?
That's that's correct, Reeve. This agreement, which we have done, is actually a seasonal one. It's not to be used by four wheelers um throughout the winter seasons anyways.
Okay, thanks. Any questions from council? Uh do have a motion. It was moved by Claus Vandermeer. Seconded by Jeff Carroll. The committee of the whole received the following report. Uh the Andrewsville Main Street Rito Lakes ATV request and that the following be recommended to council. Uh that uh committee of the whole approve Rito Lakes ATV club request to utilize Andrewsville Main Street. Uh and that the committee of the whole direct staff to amend by law thirty eight fourteen twenty twenty one. Any questions? All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Thanks, Stephen, for that one. Uh. Yours is also the next one on the community fiber primary road.
Thank you, Reeve. I so Community Fiber Company completed a delegation to council on October the fifth, it was. Um laying out their plan on what they would be completing on primary road. Uh since then, ca- staff has brought forward this report. Um detailing kind of how it's going to work, their experience, and uh it's a small section, which is actually going to be buried. It's one point eight uh kilometers of. Conduit, which will be buried from twelve fifty nine primary, and it will be heading east towards um. Montague boundary. Uh the rest would all be aerial onto hydro poles. So this is just looking for committee um approval to move this forward to council for final consent.
Any questions? Uh I do have a motion moved by Jeff Carroll, second by Karen Jennings, that the committee of the whole received the community fiber company primary road. Report and that the following be recommended to council that committed the whole direct staff to place approval of municipal consent. For community fiber company on the next council agenda. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And I think that's all your reports for now, Stephen. Thank you. If the next one is uh three C and that is on the planning services. And so I'm going to welcome you, uh Carl. Uh. And Andrew. So this report is going to be given by Andrew and Carl. Thank you, both of you. Who's first?
Thank you. Uh yes, so maybe I'll give a quick introduction and then uh I'll see if Carl would like to uh add to what I've said. Uh so yeah, this this report is for action uh written by myself and Carl. Uh in regards to the tunning township planning services, and we recommend that council direct staff to proceed with option one of this report. Uh so currently um the township. It's planning services through the agreement with the town of Smith Falls. Um. This year, we had some additional services from Lannard County. Uh the township has this year created a new job description for a planner. Uh. That is done. And over time, we're seeing increased demand for planning services. So um. As we've sort of looked at this uh. Throughout the year, um we've now reached the point where we're planning for twenty twenty two. And uh as you can see with option one, uh we're recommending to advertise and hire. Uh for a full time manager of planning position and agree to explore the sharing of this planning position with one or more neighboring municipalities with the expectation of this to be completed for twenty twenty two. Um. The rationale uh in this strategy is to help attract candidates for the position. Uh by doing that, uh manage our costs between more than one municipality uh with a forward looking solution. And no, I'll see if Carl would like to add some. Some detail or background to that.
Thanks, Andrew. Up to you, Carl.
Thank you. Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Or I think uh I think the township is uh certainly in. Right now, looking at, I guess, how how best to manage the success of the of the of the growth and development that we've been seeing over the last number of years and and certainly the increased uh. Increased demand and uh and the necessity to have dedicated planning services within the office for uh. For for a couple of days a week, a couple of days a week anyway. And and I think as uh as the report indicates, there are a number of uh number of options and and different municipalities and. In Lannard County and smaller municipalities have have sort of taken different. Different approaches. I I don't, from uh from what I can tell, I don't see that there's enough uh that there's enough. Planning specific work to to warrant a full time position in in Montague Township. However, there are. Certainly, there may be the potential with with other neighboring municipalities to what to consider. Sharing a position, especially other municipalities that may have uh resource challenges as well. So. Alternatively, uh the township could look at uh at at a sort of approach where you're you're hiring, say, a a planning administrator to deal with a lot of the day to day inquiries, perhaps other uh. Perhaps other duties and other juris- and other sort of disciplines, not just planning, but a whole range of other other things. You you likely won't be able to recruit a full time or like a. A uh a certified planner for that, but there may be, and and I think Andrew would be better be able to speak to that if there's enough other work that can. Be done that can all be pieced together to create that full time position. But that would also likely necessitate needing to go out for, go out to uh to a consultant somewhere along the way, which obviously has uh. Has cost impact. So the recommendation that's before you, I think, is best is is the way to best manage and create predictable costs while still accommodating. Dedicated dedicated planning service, and that would not just manage existing and new applications that go through, but can also look at uh. At at policies that that at some of uh. And and perhaps other other planning projects that council may wish to undertake. So I'll I'll pause there and. And certainly Andrew or I can uh can speak to any questions that that you may have as far as these these options to go. And but I I think it's it's worth stating that this is. I think it it's a great thing that the township is is now in this position to be making this this sort of decision and looking at how do we best manage and accommodate the development that we've been seeing.
Uh Karen first and then K- Claus.
So what are the municipalities have we reached out to to see if they'd be interested in doing a cost sharing with us?
Uh so basically. Thought here is um. Initially. This is our first step this evening, and then. We would have that resource available moving forward. So it's like an agreement. This would give us in principle that position to work from. And Carl may want to add to that.
Yes, I I think uh through you, Mr. Chair, I think uh. I think if if council. Supports the principle of of option one with that direction, then uh then staff can reach out to neighboring municipalities and see if there is uh see if there is interest. In in that, and we can report back to you if there's if there's some uh if there's some momentum.
So follow up?
Yeah, I I see your hand there, Karen.
So I'm not in favor of advertising for a full time position if I don't already have. Neighboring municipalities that are going to be in agreement, because if I don't have any, then I'm on the hook for the full pay as it is. And if that's the case, then for the hours that we're going to need, I would be going with option two.
So that everybody is clear on the two. Can you explain the two then, uh please, before I go to you, Claus? Um.
So option two, option two was to use a consultant to perform planning services on a pay as you go basis at the consultant's chargeable rate. Option two was to use a consultant to perform planning services on a pay-as-you-go basis at the consultant's chargeable rate.
So I guess I'll I'll go to you, Claus, and then, because I also have Jeff, and then we come back. So Claus.
Yeah, thanks, Reeve. Uh first off, uh thanks for the report, Carl and Andrew. You've done some good work on it. Uh when you're talking of a full-time planner. How many hours per week were you projecting that to be?
Uh so that is being created created similar to other full-time township positions, which is a thirty-five hours per week.
Right, okay. And secondly, uh if we go down on this route and we advertise it forth and we get applications. Would you, Carl, be involved in screening some of these?
Yes, Carl.
So certainly that's uh if if requested to do so by uh by the township, I I I'd certainly be happy to to help with that. I and and assist in that process.
Okay, the interviews and and the whole works. Thanks.
Thank you, Reeve. Uh yeah, first of all, Carl, thanks once again for for stepping up and and helping us out. Uh I mean, we all know how busy you are and and it's it's uh then your 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 place is pretty full. So as as much as you're helping us out, it's great. I mean, obviously, we would take you even more if we could, and we and we do really appreciate everything you do. We just know that the plates are getting full. And that leads me into that. I mean, we have that growth. We have that that's happening right now. And our neighboring municipalities seeing that too as well, and I'd like to kind of. Get ahead of this game. We know that uh finding planners is not a a uh an easy thing to do. And I think it's uh it would be pretty responsible for us to try to be in the driving the driver's seat. Just know we're gonna see growth and we're gonna see it in the rest of municipalities. And even if we call our municipalities tomorrow and say, do you want to share with us? They may say no right now, and that's that's their prerogative and their thought process, but. Uh as things grow and and next year, the year after, the year after, and the other municipalities are are seeing that growth too as well. Uh and we know that planners are not readily like available all the time. It's good for to have to be in that driver's seat and we can then utilize that person to. Uh to help out the municipalities, obviously, at at helping them some compensation. So that's why, I mean, I I'm in strong favor, and I said that before in in our previous meetings about. Having that planner in place. It's not an easy position to fill. And even if, like I repeat, even if they say we don't want to share right now, I have a very strong feeling that. We're there. There's gonna be a need in that future, in the next couple of years, next year, the year after, the year after, and they'll become knocking. So I think it's uh. If if we can nail one down, I think that's 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 pretty smart of us to do.
Uh anything else?
Ian.
Yes, Karen.
Ian has his hand up here, Bill.
Sorry, I didn't see. It was pretty dark there. Um Ian, please.
Yeah, thank you, Reeve. Um I have a couple of questions for Carl, if that's all right, Carl. Yeah, what is an average planning consultant rate? Do you do you have an idea what that might be?
That's. Yeah, no, that's an excellent question. I don't work with uh I don't work with a lot of consultants, but I think in general, when we're. When we're looking at a consultant who works for another firm, you're probably looking at in the range of between. Say a hundred and fifty dollars an hour roughly, maybe give or take depending on on their seniority. So I think if option two. Were to be presented, uh you would likely want to, you would likely, given that, given that cost, you would likely want to. You you you'd have to probably resource some of the day-to-day inquiries within the office, including some of those. What's my zoning questions, mailing lists, notices, those sorts of uh those sorts of things, and those can take up quite a lot of hours. So I'm not sure that, right now, I know everyone in the office right now is is stretched pretty thin. So that's that. You might need another body or or sort of a body to to sort of help out with uh with that as well, since you probably wouldn't want to be paying. A consultant that rate to be doing a lot of the the day-to-day questions. So that's a very fair, fair, fair question, counselor.
Yes, in.
Thank you very much, Reeve. Uh and Carl, I guess, you've been you've been doing the planning for the township yourself essentially for how many years?
Almost ten, the almost ten years.
So I I guess, you know, you have you have quite an extensive amount of experience regarding the workload and everything else that goes on around here. How many hours do you think a week that a planner here would need to to work, based on your opinion?
I through uh through you, Mr. Chair, uh I think based on. Reporting on on application intake on a lot of the inquiries that, a lot of the day-to-day inquiry, some of which. Are handled at the office and don't even go to me initially. You're probably looking at maybe two two days a week roughly. If council is interested in sort of exploring things like, say, a community improvement plan or looking at a heritage program. Or or maybe additional policy work, those those sorts of things that uh that can certainly add add up. But it it would from from. And and this is, I I think this is the interesting thing of of where we're at. If you'd asked me that question two, three years ago, counselor, I would have given you a different answer. I think we've seen a tremendous volume and a trend tremendous increase in development applications and interest over the last uh. Over the last year or so, and and I can certainly say that my workload has has increased a lot, not just in Montague, but in Smith Falls as well. So whether or not that's sustainable over the long term, we're we we're all. You you we're we're, it's always a bit of guesswork, but I think from uh from what I can see and certainly with some of the trends that have been brought on by COVID. As well as our location close to Ottawa, I think there's going to be some ongoing ongoing development pressure into the future. So. I think certainly we're seeing more than we did before, but uh maybe in the range of of two to three days a week would probably be. Will probably cover sort of the the full, the full service that that you would you would likely be looking for in in the office at this point in time.
So if I can just keep on going on this path, if you don't mind, Reeve? So I guess just based on those hours of basically, Carl, if we if we looked at six hundred hours over the course of the year. At a hundred and fifty dollars an hour maximum, you know, maybe I don't know if that's on the high side or not. That essentially comes out to a ninety thousand dollar hit for the township over the course of the year. Without any other, without any other expenses or anything else, like homers or pensions or working school or anything else. So salaries are comparable. I guess that, you know, I don't, I just don't see a a need right now to jump into option one with both feet. Use a consultant uh as per option two in the meantime, and see if we can partner up with someone or neighbor municipality. As mentioned by Counselor Jennings, um first, before we go and hire someone and not have. Uh a full regiment of work for them to complete and do every day. Thank you.
Uh Claus first?
Yeah, thanks, Reeve. Uh I tend to lean towards option number one. My concern with option number two, even though a consultant. Is maybe a good word to go, is that how dedicated is that consultant going to be to our needs? As and as Carl had said, consultants right now, their plates are probably pretty full. And we have a need for a a planning situation. Are they gonna jump on it right away and fast-track it through? Uh or is it gonna be put on the shelf? Thanks.
Before, maybe I'll jump in then. Just have one question. I'd just like to get cleared up first. Uh Carl, this question is to you. Um I'm uh I I was understanding that there is a possibility that. Your municipality will be looking for someone else also part, basically, part-time. Uh in other words, not full-time. And I don't know whether that's moved forward or not, or where that's at, but uh. If. If like. I I I I would be, I I think it would be great if we had a like a, I guess I'll say a full-time, part-time planner. For two or two and a half days if. For instance. Your municipality. Uh was also needing basically someone else for the approximately the same amount of time. We we've had such a great relationship cost-sharing with. Not just Smith Falls, but prior to that Drummond North Elmsley. With you at the helm. Then it moved into us cost-sharing with Smith Falls. Uh again, I feel it was, it has been a great relationship. So I'm just kind of wondering if we might be kind of jumping ahead right now. If we would be able to possibly. I guess defer that, defer the decision until we find out. Uh if there is any. Uh reason that we would should be looking towards Smith Falls and possibly continuing working with Smith Falls. On a whatever, a fifty-fifty basis. Uh I'm not sure if you could comment on that yet or not, and I hate to put you on the spot, but. I thought that I would bring it forward anyways, if you don't mind speaking to that. And then I have Karen and Jeff.
Well, thank you, uh Mr. Chair. So so Smith Falls has not uh in-depth begun its budget process for for next year. So certainly, no, no decisions have been, no decisions have been raised. We haven't uh putting on my Smith Falls hat. We haven't. We haven't advanced, we haven't advanced anything in in terms of the budget, but I think uh certainly one thing that within. Within that organization, they're looking at what are what are the resource needs going to be in in the next little. In the next little while. So I think in discussion with uh in discussion with the with the town clerk. I think the expectation was at this point, if uh if Montague or or some other municipality were interested in that, then they would. The town would be looking for them to make that first. Make that, I guess, determine if that's something that they would be looking for. And and obviously, the town will make its make its resourcing decisions accordingly. I also wanted to emphasize as well that that Smith Falls would not necess would not, putting my Montague hat on, Smith Falls wouldn't be Montague's only. Potential dance partner as well. It's uh certainly if if Montague or if council were interested in in exploring that partnership. Then Smith Falls is a municipality that you can approach, but not necessarily the only one. You have lots of neighbors as well. Many of whom may be in. Looking at similar uh similar resourcing stretches. So it could be, I I guess if if council is. And then if I may make a suggestion, if if council is interested in option one, but doesn't want to commit until they know. If there it doesn't want to commit to hiring a person or or looking at a per or looking at taking that step. Council can also provide direction to to Andrew to at least test the waters with. Different municipalities, different neighbors, to see if there's any uh if there's any potential interest, and then and then Andrew can can report back. Andrew, do you have any uh any comments on on that as a as a possible as a possible direction?
Um no, I I believe that would be a sound strategy. Um just also keeping in mind that um. Probably our our target date for um. For needing to know, covering our uh planning services for Montague would basically be in January twenty twenty-two. So. Uh if advertising were going to be done for this position, it would be beneficial to prepare in place he had probably as soon as we're able.
I guess the reason, but uh I was, the reason that I was bringing this up is that um it it like it it seems to me that we. If if we go ahead and advertise, then we we could end up making a decision. Uh to get a a full-time. Planner, or if we chose a different option, uh we would be. Spending, uh Counselor State just mentioned possibly ninety thousand dollars on a consultant. Whereas we could possibly, I'm just throwing it out as another option. Uh look at, I I I like the possibility of uh. Of I I don't mind, I have nothing against. Reaching out to all of our neighboring per- pop municipalities. But just kind of looking ahead. If if it was, if it is true that through the budget process. Our neighbor Smith Falls, who. Would be possibly only wanting a half-time planner. Then it would certainly make sense, especially Carl, that you are the main planner in Smith Falls. It would certainly seem to me to make sense that we would be sharing a a person with. With you, with Smith Falls, I should say. It it just seems to make sense. I have nothing against uh, you know, reaching out and. Seeing if there are other possibilities, but I I just want to kind of maybe move a little slow in terms of making a. Hundred percent cotton-stone decision about hiring somebody full-time when we may not really need. Someone full-time right now. Those are just my comments, but I think um Karen and and Jeff. Had their hand up, and then you also had your hand up, Carl, but I'll go to Karen and Jeff and then come back to you. So Karen, please.
Well, I'm I'm wondering, do we not already get the ability to invoice out some of the costs that we're incurring? That even if we use the contractor at a higher cost, we're still gonna recoup some of the cost? Is that not the case? Like right now, we. We use Carl, for example, but then there are certain things that Carl does that we get to invoice out to other residents or. The developers, et cetera. Do we not, Carl?
Yes, Carl.
Yes, uh yes, counselor, that uh that is.
So until we know.
Everything out of, I don't want to put in in Montague.
Christie.
Um Carl. Sorry for interrupting, but I I have not heard any anything that you have said in the last two or three minutes.
We lost him.
We lost him completely now.
Was anybody else having a problem there?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. He was fine all along until this last conversation.
Yes.
And now we lost him.
Do, can you try to see if he's available again, Christie, please?
Yes. Oh, he's trying to connect.
Oh, there he is.
Yeah, so Pearl, if you don't mind repeating what you said the last two or three minutes, because we. Most of us had trouble hearing you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I think I'm probably situated at the far end from my uh from from my router. What's what's the last that I was audible?
Where you started to answer whether or not we get to invoice out anything for me.
But yes, we do get to, we do get to invoice. We don't get to invoice everything. So roughly, I'd say probably a third to a half of. Of my hours on in Montague Township are related to sort of day-to-day inquiries, managing severance applications. Or other policy support, things like that, that any planner would be doing. And and certainly, if you were to hire a full-time pla- or even a part-time planner to represent the township at certain meetings, that those those are costs that can't be passed on. Obviously, some costs uh can be passed on, but uh even if the township were to sort of adopt a cost recovery basis. For for planning applications, if you were to be charging out a. Charging out an in an in-house planner at a certain hourly rate, that would likely result in significant cost savings. For for developers on on applications, on applications as well. So if it's charged out on an hourly rate, either by. A municipal employee or by by a consultant, then there's certainly a difference in in how much you would be, how much the township would ultimately be charging that. But but certainly, I would support a a cost recovery approach as as best as possible.
Okay, Jeff, please?
Yeah, I mean, I I hear all the comments, and I think it's great. And I mean, and I mean, just to comment a couple on, like, I mean, Counselor Trace pointed the uh the six hundred hours, the ninety thousand dollars. Uh and I think, I mean, we're pretty well out of out of position there when we're when we're talking to that kind of dollar effect uh value. And the Counselor Deputy uh Reed Vandemere's point, and that's just covering what's. And the counselor, uh Deputy uh Reed Vandemir's point, and that's just covering what's coming in the door and not looking at. How we're gonna make sure we're developing properly and having that planner in there that can deal with it and their ownership on that job too as well. And that's why I think, like, I mean, you're you're already so close at that point, so why not make sure that person is there? And also just send a loop in number three too as well, cause I mean, as we, as we, as we say number one, but remember, we put in the job description. Uh that in the job description there is duties also assigned by the clerk administrator, so it's in the job description too as well. And we all know that there's there's certain things, and and part of that discussion was helping with the overtime of the clerk administrator and everything else too as well. So it helps to offset some of that, that uh a little bit of that workload in a different avenue too as well, so. Really, I I the the decision, and and once again to go back, treasurer or uh planners are not. And treasurer's two ends, don't get me wrong, but the planners are not uh uh something that that is just easy to pick up on, so that that to have somebody. Uh with us. And we can utilize also in-house and also to share. Is gonna be a massive benefit and move our our township in the right direction and not move in the right direction and not be messy. Cause if we go contractor way, we're just gonna get. Messy, I think, so it's uh anyways, I I I've kind of said my piece, so. I hope we can kind of move forward.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I do have a motion here then, uh this was moved by Karen Jennings and second by Ian Straight. Uh that the committee of the whole received the following report, uh that is the township planning services report. And that the following be recommended to council, that council direct staff to proceed with option one of this report. Uh all in favor? Opposed? This is carried. Thank you. Thank you, Andrew and Carl, for this report. Um moving on. Uh we have no reports, no petitions, motions, notice of motions, want to finish business or other business. And before we adjourn, uh Christie, do we have any questions from the coun, from the?
Carl has a question, Carl.
Uh yes, Carl, and so, yes, Carl.
Sorry, uh sorry, Mr. Chair, I thank you, I I'm I'm just looking to confirm uh staff direction on on that, so. Based on option number one, should uh. Would would Andrew there take as as directed for him to outreach to other municipalities at this point to see if there's any. If there's any interest in potentially sharing a position for a couple of days a week?
I think that. Seems to me that that's the staff direction, uh do we have consensus there? I'll go around the table. Claus?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah, and future need too as well, they see the future need coming up, cause it's gonna be hard, it's sort of ramble a bit there, but it might be hard for. When he makes that phone call, they're they're gonna commit to it, but I'm sure more to see like what that future need that they're probably gonna think that they're gonna need to as well.
Yep. Uh Karen?
Uh no, cause I wanted to contracting out.
Okay, and Ian?
No, I agree, I wanted to put her contracted as well.
Okay, so I I am in favor of uh us uh reaching out to uh the neighboring municipalities, so uh. I would be in favor of option one then for now, so uh that is carried, that is consensus then, Andrew, for you? That's directions for you?
Yeah, we'll follow.
Okay. Okay, thank, thank you. And nothing else then? Uh Christie, do you have questions?
Yes, I have uh one question. Um in regards to um the ATV. Um. Report, um the resident would like to know why the residents were not informed of this.
Uh just, I'm not sure whether uh whether Stephen or Ian. To respond to this. And just to also to go along with that question. Uh this, this is. Only committed the whole meeting, it still has to come back to. Counsel. And so anyways, I do see you Steve, so do you wanna answer this first and then I'll go to Jeff, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Chair, that was exactly uh what I was just gonna reiterate, is uh staff just kind of got this request and brought it forward to committee of the whole for discussion. Um and if there's any concerns from residents, definitely to uh bring forward, but uh. As you stated, that's uh that's why it's now at committee of the whole.
Right. Jeff, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I I agree, cause I, when I, when I first read it, I'm like, what are the people are gonna think of this, but when the the biggest part that, you know, it aids in the cow and also. For me, uh when I also heard that it was already approved from the going across the bridge and the other side. We were almost like the last ones as well, but I also was gonna be very curious, that's my understanding. And if 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 Stephen wants to correct that or not, and then and then kind of get the feedback from the from the residents, I was looking forward to that too as well.
And Stephen?
I think it's worth noting too is that we do currently have an ATV bylaw, this is just allowing the club to kind of make sure that they are insured to use our roadway. Uh this is more of a formality uh for this club as well. Our our bylaw allows any residents in Montague resident, Montague Township to use our roadways as it is right now. Um so this is more or less just specific to our our club and which is very, they're insured. Um and it's just another formality for that club.
So thank you, thank you for the question, I think, I think the question's been answered, but just to the questionnaire. That um uh be aware that you can bring any information forward to Stephen in the meantime. And uh if council, if 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 anyone wishes. Uh they can also do a delegation, that's also uh permitted obviously by any public member, so that's. That's possibility too, so you just have to reach out to our staff and that to be uh looked after, so any other questions? Christie?
No, I have no other questions here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then I have a motion, it was moved by Ian Straight and second by Claus Vandemir. Uh that. The. Meeting do now adjourn uh at eight twenty-one. PM, all in favor? That's carried, thank you, that's it for now then, thanks a lot.